Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call the October 8th Select Board Meeting to order at 5:30. Before we move into the agenda, I would like to have a moment of silence for Jerry Eldridge, who was a longtime water superintendent of the Sconset Water Company and passed away. Thank you. I don't believe that there are any changes to our agenda this evening. We do have one board member remote, Malcolm McNabb, so we'll be taking all of our votes by roll call. And so we will move to announcements. I'll turn it over to Libby Gibson, the Town Manager.
Thank you. We have several announcements. First off, this meeting is being video and audio recorded. The warrant for the annual town meeting, which will take place on Monday, May 4th, start on Monday, May 4th, is currently open for citizen warrant article submittals through Monday, November 17th at 4:00 p.m. Town Council will be available for citizen warrant article consultations on Wednesday, October 15th from 10:00 to 12:00, and Thursday, October 16th from 4:00 to 6:00, all via Zoom. And that information is found on the town website. You can contact the Town Manager's Office for Zoom links. We have Hazardous Waste Collection Day coming up at the Department of Public Works on Saturday, October 25th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at the 188 Madigat Road Site. Residents may safely dispose of hazardous household material items at that event. We are inviting residents to share their input on the future of our Island Home. We have a short online survey, which is out and live and active. It's open until October 31st. We hope that people will please give us their input. And that information is on the town website, also on the Select Board's meeting agenda. We have a year-round deed restriction pilot program, which is now open. The Affordable Housing Trust has launched the program. It offers financial incentives to preserve or create year-round housing. Eligible homeowners, property owners, and home buyers may now apply. The details in the application are online. Also, the link is on the Select Board web agenda. And we had another announcement that came in late. There is a dedication and a rededication and unveiling of a special new bronze plaque to celebrate the life and work of Walter Beinecke Jr. This Sunday, October 12th, from 1:00 to 3:00, at the First Congregational Church, there will be a short ceremony with speakers from the Nantucket Historical Association, the Conservation Foundation, the church, the town of Nantucket, and each will speak to the early impact that Mr. Beinecke's work had on the natural and built environment on Nantucket. And after the ceremony, the church will provide tours of the spire, which Walter was instrumental in replacing. That is it.
I remember when they put that on when I was a kid.
Too late.
There's actually a video you can Google or you can search for on YouTube of the placement of the spire.
Are there any opening Select Board announcements or comments? Okay, seeing none. We will move to an update on public comment questions from prior Select Board meetings. We have some from September 17th. I will read those. Veronica Bonet. That was quite lengthy. "I have been trying to understand how we got to a point that there are approximately 50 completed turbines, 150 blades at the Vineyard Wind site, and more going up every day, and yet there is still no pollution plan in place for the likely event of another blade failure. In fact, the town of Nantucket and its historic preservation attorney, Cultural Heritage Partners, expressed no objections when the revised COP for the project was secretly reviewed and then approved back in January. In reviewing the extensive communications between Song Kim at BSEE and Brooke Moore since the blade failure, what stands out to me is that Song Kim's role was to appease Nantucket. She had no authority for enforcement. What do the town's environmental lawyers have to say about the lack of federal oversight of the Vineyard Wind project? CHP are not environmental lawyers; they are historic preservation lawyers. We have only hired attorneys to work on our national historic landmark status, but so much more is harming Nantucket. And in fact, their specialty in this space doesn't seem to be protecting our national historic landmarks, since there are no restrictions on heights of turbines or the quantity of turbines. Of course, Nantucket not having environmental representation has benefited the Healey administration and Vineyard Wind. I have seen no evidence that anyone in the Healey administration has gone to bat for Nantucket on this. Anyone advocating for Nantucket should have been screaming back in January when the revised COP was reviewed in secret and then approved by Bohm without an emergency response plan for blade failures, among other deficiencies. Public statements were made by Brooke Moore on several occasions that the town of Nantucket would like to see the offshore wind projects built. However, regardless of personal feelings about offshore wind, the Select Board's role in all of this was to advocate for and make sure Nantucket's seat at the table led to proper protections. That has not happened. The communications I have reviewed give the appearance that Ms. Moore is trying to play middleman and appease the Nantucket community while Bohm and Vineyard Wind ignore federal environmental rules and laws and enforcement procedures. Ms. Moore received notification from Song Kim on 12/30/24 that Vineyard Wind had received approval for commercial power production at one turbine. There was clearly a financial and/or tax credit reason that this power needed to be live in 2024. Although the company was required to explain post-approval why the 10-day commissioning process for that one turbine took place over just five hours, the explanation was never made public. Did Ms. Moore ever get an explanation for that? Let's hope there is not a blade failure at AT 39. Ms. Moore's response to Song Kim was as expected. How did she know about this? What did the town of Nantucket and CHP do to demand the enforcement of the MOA that said no commercial production was allowed without ADLS? Did the Select Board or CHP reach out to Mara Healey's office, the State Historic Preservation Office, or the press? Regarding aircraft detection lighting systems, ADLS, the lights are still blinking on all the towers for hours at a time. There is no supplier mentioned as having received approval for the ADLS system. There is no documentation from the FAA that the system is effective on and approved for the GE Halide turbines. It appears that Klaus Muller has lied to Ms. Moore in person at town meetings in emails when she spoke to him at a restaurant in Boston, and yet she continues to relay his message that ADLS is imminent despite there being absolutely no evidence that this is the case. I can name six occasions where Ms. Moore told the Nantucket community that ADLS was imminent, including in August, when the community was told it was up and running. It is not up and running, and there is no available communication between Ms. Moore and the FAA, Bohm, Bessie, the state EEA, Julian Seer, Thomas Mokely, or any employee of Vineyard Wind to the contrary. If I am wrong about this, please share what communication is available. The good neighbor agreement made us walk away from the federal process when the town of Nantucket absolved Vineyard Wind from any further liability related to the blade failure. It lost any remaining leverage to push the company to comply with basic safety preparations. There should be no further negotiations with Vineyard Wind until there is an enforcement mechanism in place." That was basically Veronica's list of questions in there. Town response. For matters outside the town's jurisdiction, federal and state agencies remain the best source of information. The town will share additional updates as they become available. To learn more about the rule of federal oversight of the Vineyard Wind project, please see our fax on the town website and the Bohm website, bohm.gov/renewableenergy. We encourage you to direct your questions to the appropriate officials to learn more about the installation of the ADLS. Finally, for more information about the town's ongoing discussions with Vineyard Wind and demands of the company, please see here. References the town website/3663/NantucketDemandsAccountabilityFromVI. That concludes that question. Then Campbell Sutton got up and asked, "If you opt out of the smart meter, are you no longer part of the electric co-op the town has?" Town response. "Opting out of a smart meter does not affect your participation in the Nantucket Power Choice Municipal Electric Aggregation Program. If you have specific questions about your enrollment in Power Choice, please contact Lauren Sinatra, the Energy Coordinator, at her town email address." "How individually hackable are these smart meters?" Town response. "National Grid states that smart meters transmit only encrypted energy use data, not personal information, and that their systems meet national security standards. For more details, including answers to other frequently asked questions, please visit For smart meter questions or assistance before or after installation, please contact National Grid Customer Service at 1-800-322-3223." Third question. "As sewer commissioners, would you possibly in the future consider looking at summer water usage? Like, you know, just sort of a little bit of a deduction to watering your vegetable garden or outdoor showers?" Town response. "The sewer commission, as noted during the recent rate presentation, is looking at not only the FY 27 rate, but the future of the sewer rates over the next five years. While this type of deduction was not included in the most recent rate changes, it is something that we will ask our consultant to help model, to understand the impact, and provide the commission with information as to whether it is feasible to structure some sort of deduction to accommodate the uses mentioned." Okay. That concludes the follow-up from the meeting of September 17th. Next up, we have public comment for items that are not otherwise on our agenda for discussion this evening.
Good evening. Hi, Emmy Kilvert, Nantucket Neighborhoods First. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Libby for taking the first steps in notifying the online platforms of our short-term rental regulations. It's just, I think we're all grateful that you heard the community's concerns and reached out. And we look forward to hearing any response you get from these platforms. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, Amy Eldridge. I just had a couple of quick questions in regards to the Loran Station. That whole situation out there is really sad, and I'm just curious what the $4.5 million that we approved at town meeting in either '22 or '23 actually paid for? It just seems very sad that we have people living in those kind of conditions. And it's heartbreaking that we, as a town, can't do better for our employees. And who's overseeing that? There's not checks on that building. Who's doing maintenance? I mean, I don't understand. And this is just a big black eye for the town, because now you're coming and asking for us to refund an island home, and we can't even take care of the Loran Station that people are currently living in. And then you want us to give you a lot of money for an island home, and we don't take care of any of the structures here. It's really sad that the maintenance on these buildings, you know, we can't expect the life expectancy of a building that is built to stay that, let's just say, 25 years for the new fire station or the police station if we don't put anything into it. We just can't keep throwing tons and tons of money, and we're talking millions and millions of dollars into facilities that we're not properly taken care of until it's too late. And some of the pictures that were on The Current, I mean, it should make you sick to your stomach that we allowed young adults to live in those facilities, possibly with mold issues, which could come back to haunt these young folks later in life with mold issues in their lungs. I mean, cancer, I mean, asbestos. I mean, it's insane that we allowed this to happen. And I asked this question at town meeting in '23 about the youth hostel that we were putting people up in for the lifeguards. I mean, that was sad, too, that that's in that bad of shape. My next question is, it is my understanding that if you're having to have your septic pumped more than four times in a calendar year, that equates that your system has failed? And in an article in The Current, somebody from the police station mentioned that they're pumping out twice a month during the summer season, when there's a lot of volume, living in the Loran Station. And I think that that should be an eye-opening, that the septic has failed there and that it's not okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add...
State your name.
Sorry? Okay, Charity Benz. I just want to add my thanks to Emmys, to Libby, to Tom Dixon for helping to shepherd this through.
Is there anyone else with the public comment this evening? Seeing none. We'll move on to approval of minutes and warrants.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Malcolm McNabb on line.
Aye.
Matt Fee.
Aye.
Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Don Hill, aye. That carries unanimously. Next up, we have some consent items for the Fire Department and for Health and Human Services. Okay.
I've got it. Yep. These are gift acceptances, and the recommendation is that we accept the following gifts or donations to town agencies. To the Fire Department, a gift of 10 batteries from Marine Home Center, value estimated at $3,200 to power the department's emergency tools that require portable batteries. And to the Health and Human Services Department, a gift of radio time on Ac FM valued at $10,000 from Tara Ristieri for the purpose of supporting radio outreach for the Comprehensive Human Services Needs Assessment. And I would make a motion to accept all gifts and donations for their designated purposes with thanks to the donors.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Malcolm McNabb.
Aye.
Matt Fee.
Aye.
Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Don Hill, that carries unanimously. Next up, we have Citizen Departmental Committee requests and reports from the Housing Office. Request for authorization to submit a Housing Production Plan Certification Request Letter to Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for Chapter 40B Safe Harbor. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, everyone. Dylan Machampal, Town's Deputy Housing Director. I'm here tonight to request your support for sending a letter to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, EO HLC, asking for certification of the town's 2021 Housing Production Plan. This certification is an important step in maintaining Nantucket's Safe Harbor status under Chapter 40B. As you know, Safe Harbor allows the town to retain more local control over comprehensive permit projects, provided that we demonstrate continued progress toward our affordable housing goals. Certification with the EO HLC confirms that we have met the necessary housing unit production thresholds to stay in compliance. The units contributing to this certification include two homeownership units created through Habitat for Humanity, one homeownership unit created through Richmond at Sandpiper Place 1, and 28 rental units at Richmond's Meadows 1. That's a total of 31 units. Together, these developments represent meaningful progress in creating both ownership and rental opportunities for year-round residents and help us meet the state's affordability benchmarks. By approving this letter, the board would be authorizing the town to formally submit these recent accomplishments to EO HLC for review and certification. Once certified, Nantucket would maintain its Safe Harbor status, continuing to protect the town's ability to guide and manage future development in a way that best serves our community. Thank you all for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
Sorry. Can you just include in your motion to authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board and the town?
Yep, and authorize the chair to sign.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor by roll call. Malcolm McNabb.
Aye.
Matt Fee.
Aye.
Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Don Hill, aye. That carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have real estate items. Request for acceptance of quitclaim deed for the United States of America acting by and through the Secretary of Homeland Security by delegation of authority to the Commandant of the United States Coast Guard for a certain parcel of land situated off Milestone Road, shown as Law 1006 on Land Court Plan Number 5004-91, and perpetual and non-exclusive rights and easement for access and utility maintenance purposes set forth in said deed.
Madam Chair, Malcolm?
Malcolm?
Could someone define quitclaim?
Vicky, would you like to take that? Vicky Marsh is on.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Malcolm, it means that there are warranties for the state of the title, and so that they are conveying the state of the title that they have currently, which is a clear record marketable title to the town.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions on this? Motion?
I can't imagine the effort that went into this. I can't imagine the effort that had to go into getting this done, so I would move approval.
Is there a second?
Second, and then I want to hear Libby.
Libby?
I don't want to interrupt the vote.
Okay, well, we'll take the vote, and then you can say something. All those in favor by roll call. Malcolm McNabb.
Aye.
Matt Fee.
Aye.
Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Tom Dixon.
Aye, and thanks to Vicky for working on this.
Don Hill, aye. Carries unanimously.
Thank you. I just want to thank Vicky as well, and to note that this has been going on for at least 20 years. It was a congressional act that transferred the land to the town. However, the property transaction documents had to be initiated through the Coast Guard. We had at least probably four Coast Guard real estate representatives over the years who got to a certain point and then left, and then had to be picked up again from the very beginning. So there was a lot of effort and time and repetitive motions that went through this, but thank goodness it's finally done. So thank you, everybody involved.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Town Manager's Report.
Okay, so we have our real estate specialist, Bob Baistravsky, here to review the town's encroachment policy. Over the summer, and as a matter of fact, the last couple of summers, we've been noting that certain types of encroachments have significantly proliferated and increased and have not been responsive to repeated notices to remove them. So this summer, we engaged a couple of interns who did a little project on encroachments, and they gave a presentation to town staff towards the end of the summer. And we just wanted to take the time to review with the board the policy that is in existence already, ask for your sort of reendorsement of it, because we would like to get back out there with some energy and get at removing the encroachments without a lot of written back and forth with property owners. Identified encroachments need to be removed, and when they aren't, we're going to go remove them, which is what we would... That's the bottom line. We'd like the board to endorse that approach, and Bob's going to take you through the policy.
Thank you, Libby. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm going to review with you a PowerPoint presentation that was initially drafted by our interns this summer. And Tracy McDonald and I have spent a lot of time focused on encroachments. Also, Drew Patnold, the DPW director, is here this evening, and he's also ready, willing, and able to answer any questions you may have, as I am. And I'm going to go through the presentation. You're welcome to ask any questions as you like, but hopefully I'll go through it at a pace where we'll have time for any questions afterwards. So we're talking about encroachments. What we're talking about tonight, just to set the table a little bit, is your current encroachment policy, the policy that was endorsed by this board back originally in 1994 and revised somewhat over the years, most recently 2014. So we have encroachments that occur when a property abutting public lands extends into the public land, and there's also encroachments that concern height of hedges, which concerns driver and pedestrian safety. We're going to talk about legal identification and enforcement perspectives. We'll provide some examples of do's and don'ts regarding encroachments. As the town manager stated, we seem to see an heightened amount of encroachments reported during the spring and summer months. Slower now as we enter the winter, but they're still there, they're still coming. This is a significant burden for the town to manage. From a time and staffing point of view, we rely on the public to assist us, and the presentation is part of our public outreach campaign to educate the public on encroachments and remedies. So we can go to the next slide. Erica, please. So there are state laws. What gives you the right to even get involved in encroachments? There are state laws that do that. Chapter 86, Section 3 of the Mass General Laws governs encroachments onto a public way. There's no encroachment on a public way that gives any title rights to an abutter. There's some exceptions for things that happened prior to 1917, but generally, we're not talking about those. An encroachment shall be removed by the owner upon written notice by the town authority, and if it's not removed, an authorized officer has the right to remove that encroachment. Next slide, please. There are also state regulations, and again, in summary, regulations help us implement state laws. So there are both laws and regulations from the state that authorize local municipalities to enforce encroachments and create policies. Next slide, please. So Chapter 127 of our bylaws is where the encroachment policy is based, and it talks about obstructions in the public right-of-way. And in short, you'll see the summary on the top. It's prohibited to place any obstruction upon any street, sidewalk, bicycle path, or way without written permission from the Select Board. The public right-of-way extends beyond the paved road, and what you'll see, you're going to see some illustrations later, and we'll talk about this, where pavement typically is 20 to 24 feet wide, a paved portion of a road. The public right-of-way is very often twice that width. So you will see encroachments that take place outside of the pavement but on area that people may think is their property, when actually it is town or county-owned property. And we put some helpful hints here as to some things to look for. You don't necessarily need a surveyor to go out to help you with this. So if you look at telephone poles, if you look at fire hydrants, road signs, those things, for the most part, are all going to be within the public way. So if you're doing something on property adjacent to your property, closer to the road than a telephone pole, a fire hydrant, or road sign, chances are very good that that is an encroachment. As Libby noted, what we're seeing a lot of these days is large rocks and stakes put in the public right-of-way. And a statement here, just because the land in front of your home is paved, it doesn't make it part of your property. Again, a gentle reminder that this is town-owned land, town or county. Next slide, please. So here's an example. This is a helpful illustration, I think. This is Milestone Road. It goes from the Rotary out to Sconset, and you'll see the blue portion is the paved, let's call it the paved, portion of the road. The red portion is the public right-of-way. So you'll see generally, it could, the road could be in the center of the public right-of-way, it could be skewed to one side or the other. Not always, as Drew would tell us, but sometimes, when you see a bike path alongside a road, that bike path is within the public right-of-way. And there may also be similar space on the other side of the paved road that's within the public right-of-way. So this is just a helpful illustration for people in other neighborhoods. Madigat Road is 50 to 60 feet. It's variable. So the right-of-way, again, much wider than the paved portion. We're doing a project now in Surfside, Orkewall, Monahance, at Lover's Lane. Those roads are 40 feet right-of-way. So you have pavement, and then beyond that on both sides, you have a right-of-way. Tom Nevers Road has just been established to be 60 feet. So again, a lot of width there in this right-of-way beyond the pavement. So again, a lot of width there in this right-of-way beyond the pavement. Next slide, please. So here's some examples. On the left, and again, these aren't the most egregious examples. All of you have these examples in your head, in your phones, perhaps on your properties. There are stones, as you can see on the left, and again, those stones may not look that dramatic, but if you're walking or driving at night, those are things you could trip on. Those certainly could be considered a safety hazard. In the middle is a good example of stakes. Stakes generally take the form of metal stakes, they're nailed into the ground, clearly they're within the public right-of-way in this example. And again, if you have a scenario where you have emergency vehicles or first responders, even if the road is otherwise clear, it could be a problem if there's somebody walking, an animal, or another car on the road. On the right, another example of rocks, you can kind of see in the distance, there's a telephone pole well to the right of where these rocks appear to be. And so again, it's very likely that these are encroachments in the public right-of-way. And again, at night, a car could come into contact with those rocks, as could a runner or a walker, and cause an injury. Next slide, please. So what are some of the potential consequences, things I already alluded to? It limits space for public parking. If you have the stakes, if you have the rocks, that may be an area where public parking is allowed, and people aren't going to be able to do that if you have a vehicle breakdown. Pedestrians now need to walk in the street to get around obstructions, but they may need to avoid vehicles or other types of things in the street. Tripping hazards for people, these typically, these encroachments are not well-lit. They're going to be stones, they're going to be rocks, they could be hedges, and they're hard to see at night. The two that I did not go over that are there, again, are mostly focused on safety, which is important. Emergency vehicles need to access these neighborhoods, they have to get somewhere, and they have to get there quickly, and sometimes there just isn't a way for them to make their way down the road if in fact there's other vehicles there or people with these encroachments. So that's something that's very important that we need to focus on. Next slide, please. Let's talk about hedges. We focused on stakes and rocks. Hedges can also be a form of encroachment. And so we have a policy, in our policy, that allows hedges to be of a certain height. And you'll see here, the highlighted area, the first part, is focused on corners. So you're looking at three feet above the height of the street, it goes for 20 feet in either direction, so you have a clear sightline as you're taking a corner, both for pedestrians and for vehicles. And this is something that we're often asked to take a look at, often asked to enforce, is just making sure those corners are clear of vegetation, so people can see where they're going.
Quick comment, I think that's the most important encroachment we have in this whole list when we get to talking about it, but that view on corners, especially with some of the mayhem that happened this summer with e-bikes and scooters and cars, it was just constant, and a lot of it was not being able to see anything.
Right. Yeah, and again, I don't want to paint a picture that people are entirely uncooperative. We do, we send letters, as you'll see what our process is, and we did get a lot of feedback from folks. We did get folks that called and said, "What can I do? What do I need to do?" And in certain cases, we went out and met with them and talked to them, and again, the folks that, many of the folks that have these situations going on, you know, they're living in a busy area, and they're just as concerned as we are about the ability to see. They come in and out of that property more than anyone else, so they have the same issues. So when it's brought to their attention and reminded, there's a policy on this, it's safety, the light bulb goes off, and so I don't disagree with what you said. Next slide, please. I like this illustration. May not look like Nantucket, but it does lay out our policy in an illustration form. So you will see, and center bottom there, that's kind of in a nutshell, the rules for hedges. So you have a height limited to three feet, you have a corner, the idea is if you cut back approximately 20 feet, you can have that sightline that you need. And again, you can also have encroachments coming from above, so you want to keep your trees trimmed at least six feet above the sidewalk, so you can walk on the sidewalk, you can see around the corner, and across the street is a violation. So thank you. Next slide, please. So here's some violations, and again, not the worst we have, but these are things you see all over the island. On the left side, good example of a very tight public way versus, you know, street. So not a lot of room there, but that's why it's so important that we keep that corner within the policy and keep it down to three feet, because you have a very tight corner there, not a lot of visibility at all. You can have bicycles coming around, you can have folks walking dogs, there's no sidewalk, you can have cars, and it's very important that we keep that sightline open. In the middle, someone took a stab at actually maintaining that corner hedge, trying to keep it to a certain height, but you'll see from above, there are now some encroachments coming down. So you have a similarly obstructed corner sightline, so you have to keep on top of both of those issues. On the right, an example, you could have a public way that's going to the beach, or going down a walking path, and you can have encroachments there. And again, it's not ideal to have these hedges and shrubs blocking you as you're trying to walk up and back from the beach. Next slide, please. So here's some compliance, there's much compliance on the island. Most people do a very nice job and really try. On the left, you have a wide and clear area, presumably the hedges that you see are probably close to the property line, edge of the public way, and then there's an open piece of lawn, and then you get to the road. In the middle, what's circled in red is a stone that actually says "public way." This is out in Wisconsin, one of the access paths to the Bluff Walk. And again, these folks are keeping the area clear and keeping the hedges trimmed, and it is well-marked, so people know that is an area they are allowed to use. On the right side, we have an example of a corner hedge, where you have a higher hedge going alongside the house, and then as you hit the corner, you're down to the three-foot mark, again, for those sightlines that Mr. Fee pointed out. Yes, ma'am?
In that middle photo, should those white rocks be there?
I knew that would show up. Yeah, probably not ideal, again, whether they're there just to denote something, I don't really, you know, clearly the public way is marked there, it's well-maintained. Yeah, in a perfect world, I would say, let's kind of move those rocks over, but we did find this as an example of something that at least was marked as a public way, that nobody's trying to block aggressively, anyway. Thank you, Erica. Next slide, please. So what is our policy? We have three categories. Category one, urgent, immediate public safety hazard. Category two, do not pose an immediate threat to public safety. And category three, encroachments permitted to remain with permission from the Select Board. We're mostly probably going to talk about tonight, Categories One and Two. Three is generally considered historic encroachments. So interestingly, what are historic encroachments? Well, it could be friendship stairs. Very often, friendship stairs are within the public way. Could be someone's parking area that they've used for a long time. Now, what do we do with these? We say, come to the Select Board, ask for permission to license that encroachment. So you're still going to have an encroachment, but it will be a licensed encroachment. The Select Board has said, you know, we don't want people to be tearing down their friendship stairs, but let's just make sure we all understand that it's in the public way. Next slide, please. So reporting and enforcement process. We have several ways to report encroachments. With the onset of technology, things are now done on your phone through an app, that's what the top section is talking about. There's literally an application called Click and Fix, and you can download that onto your phone, and as you come across encroachments, or what you believe to be encroachments, you can download it immediately and forward it. There's also a page on the town website. So our process under the policy is that when these reports come in, they are sent to the Public Works Department. The Public Works Director, or his or her designee, will review them, and he will, he or she will determine whether they are a Category One encroachment, is this something that is an immediate threat to public safety? If so, then they can make a decision, we want to rectify that, remedy that immediately, and they have the authority to do that under the current policy. Next slide, please. If the violation is not an immediate threat, again, typically with the hedges, property owners send a letter, and our current policy requires that this letter be sent certified. So we, and this will be sent to our office, this will make its way to the real estate office. Drew and his team will say, well, this is something that you guys should take a look at. We'll take a look at it. Sometimes we'll go out and do a quick drive-by, try to determine who's, you know, a report may come in that says, "My neighbor at 5 Smith Way," when really it's 6 or 7, so we want to make sure we're identifying the right property. And then we will draft a letter and send that letter out certified. The letter encloses the policy, explains the policy, encloses the illustration, and says, please, it specifies what the encroachment is, and says, "Please take care of this within 15 days." If they do not respond, if they do not do anything within those 15 days, the Department of Public Works has a right to go remove the encroachment and assess the costs to the property owner. And I'll take a slight detour, because I have a fun article from 2000, this is going, from the Time Machine in the Inky Mirror. This is from 2000, published 25 years ago. Hedge owners on West Dover Street expressed outrage last week after they claimed the Department of Public Works employees butchered their prized greenery. DPW workers pruned hedges on the street back to the property lines as a matter of public safety. Three West Dover Street homeowners submitted a petition from street residents and voiced their complaints about the tragedy that befell their bushes. Town officials expressed little sympathy at the lack of finesse used to trim the encroaching hedges, advising homeowners to keep up with maintenance to avoid future incidents. So the moral of the story is, you should take care of it, rather than having us do it for you. Next slide, please. This is just a sample letter you'll see if you are accused of being an encroacher, and it's a standard letter. We will tailor it to the specific instance, and as I said, we will enclose for you helpful documents, including the illustration we talked about, including the policy, and give you a number and an address and an email if you want to engage with us. And like I said, there have been many people over this past summer that have engaged, and we've worked with them to remedy the encroachments. Next slide, please. So we did have the interns look at other communities and say, well, what else, are there people doing things differently? We seem to have a proliferation of these things. And we looked at other seasonal communities primarily, and the two that came up with somewhat similar policies were Chatham and Provincetown. Chatham literally has the same level system, although their levels are reversed. Three is severe, one is the least severe. Requires department head to notify a person, town council can get involved. Provincetown, again, the directors of Public Works, fire, police determine, and then it goes to Select Board for enforcement. So again, our policy is very thorough, very comprehensive. We believe it's a good policy, and nobody seems to have a better answer as to how to do this, and in fact, these policies require more process at your level and town council level, which probably isn't warranted in all cases. Next slide, please. Here are the resources. I don't know if people in the room or on television are able to use these QR codes, but they are in the packet, and we can always provide them for you. It's our encroachment policy and the Click and Fix app that I explained. And again, feel free to review both of those, and whether it's members of this board or members of the public who have any questions, we're pleased to take those at any time. Thank you.
Questions? Comments? Drew?
Hi. Just working. Trupetna, Director of Public Works. Thanks, Bob, that was a great presentation. I wrote some things down, I wanted to build upon your presentation. You know, the encroachment policy is very clear, that it's the Department of Public Works, whether it be myself or a designee, that is the authority that's empowered to make a determination on whether an encroachment is deemed a public safety concern and should be categorized and addressed as a Type 1 encroachment. I just want to make our position clear. I know that myself and my staff and those in other departments agree that, you know, especially the rocks and stakes, as kind of minimal as they might seem, things like that in the public way, to us, are a public safety concern, for all the reasons that Bob covered in the presentation. If this board were so inclined to endorse that stance, I think it'd be helpful for our ability to enforce this policy as adopted. In addition, with the policy for Type 1 encroachments, we do not plan to send out letters to property owners in advance, and they will not be given 15 days to remove the encroachment. Part of the issue with treating these encroachments as Type 2, for example, is that by the time the encroachment is identified, and then we go through the notification process, we then give them two weeks, we then follow up. It can easily be a month or more, which is at least half, if not more than half, of our summer season, where this really becomes a major issue, especially with all the people and traffic on the island. Sorry, just lost my spot. The administrative burden, including the initial inspection, property line research, surveying at times if necessary, then documentation, drafting, and sending letters via certified mail, tracking those mailings, following up with the property owners, performing follow-up inspections, et cetera, is really also beyond our capacity, especially given, you know, just how big of a problem this has become across Nantucket for both the Department of Public Works and the real estate office. This is extremely time-consuming. You know, so we anticipate that our approach going forward will be to remove these encroachments as soon as our schedule allows, and when we've removed the encroachments, we will not be returning rocks and stakes to the property owners. When we've done that in the past, the encroachments would almost always return within the weeks and months, sometimes the days after we've gone out and addressed the encroachment. We also, as kind of as Bob had mentioned in that article from 2000, which is very timely, I also firmly believe that we should not be required to send the same property owner the same letter year after year after year. If your hedges are an issue one year, you should know better than to let them become an issue the following year. I'd also like to summarize a discussion that I had with a property owner in Wisconsin over the summer. This might not be that educational or enlightening for the board, but maybe for the public that's watching. This resident had placed boulders along the side of the road to restrict parking, which was blocking their gate and making traffic flow and turning movements very difficult, if not impossible. I explained that, one, it is not an abutter's right to determine if parking is or is not allowed anywhere on a public way. Two, the boulders created a serious safety concern for residents, I'm sorry, for vehicles and pedestrians, especially at night. And three, most importantly, it doesn't solve the problem because it's not enforceable. The boulders may even push those parked vehicles further out into the road, making the turning movements and the challenge for through traffic even worse, but they also couldn't call the police to enforce anything because it's not designated as no parking. So for issues like that, we, time and time again, ask that people bring those concerns to the Traffic Safety Work Group for review, if it's recommended, and if necessary, we would then bring them back to this Select Board for review and approval for the removal of on-street parking. And then the installation of a yellow line and/or no parking sign, you know, would take place, and the best part of that is that it is enforceable. If there continues to be parking issues, calling the police will actually do something. It's impossible to call the police on someone parking in front of boulders that shouldn't be there. So with all that, just to say that, you know, the stakes and rocks, I understand what the intent is, but ultimately, for a number of reasons, it's really just not the right way to go about it. Thank you.
I think the stakes and rocks are horrible, and I think that it's gotten worse. I think people see other people doing it, and they've started doing it. And yeah, I would, I for one would endorse that you can remove them if they're in the public right-of-way, because doing that notice process could, you know, take us through a whole month of July or August, when it's an even greater hazard. I do have one question, because so many of these people get upset because they've, they're watering that lawn area, and they don't want what they perceive as kind of their grass damaged. So are we allowing irrigation as an encroachment? because they've, they're watering that lawn area, and they don't want what they perceive as kind of their grass damaged. So are we allowing irrigation as an encroachment? And what should our policy be on that piece of it?
That's really up to you. I mean, if someone were to ask, can I install irrigation in the public right-of-way? The answer would be not without a license. But I don't think you're getting asked.
No, we're definitely not because you can tell where it's being irrigated, especially this summer. So Matt, go ahead.
I've been through this, you know, I've been around a while. I've been through this a bunch of times now. And what typically happens is we, you know, we get all excited, and we're going to do this. And then we go and we do Brant Point, and we do, you know, Lincoln Circle, and we run out of steam, and it goes away again. And what I'm seeing happen in, I can talk about sort of Lincoln Circle and the cliff because I walk my dogs there every day. It is, it is completely different than it was even five or 10 years ago. The pressure in that area from the lack of parking downtown has driven cars up into that area. The internet-making Steps Beach, so well-known, has forced them all to park all around up there, even on spaces that are yellow lines, and they park everywhere they can. So the people, some of this is self-preservation. Down at Brant Point, it's a Turo parking. So these people are dealing with Turo cars that are parking down there because it's close to the boats, and the people can walk over and take their rental cars. So all these issues, you know, we can do this, but we're not getting at the heart of this issue. And I'm wondering, is this our best use of staff time? I think it is on the corners. You know, I think that's an amazing, important thing that we have to do. But on this other stuff, I think if we gave these homeowners direction, like if I sent a bunch of pictures to Bob after he and I talked the other day, and he, you know, and what you could see is every property was doing it slightly differently. And the ones that had irrigation were doing it because it became a mud hole if the people were parking there constantly. And it's the landscapers, when they're doing someone else's house, don't park at that house, they park next to it. It's they park across the street, you know. So the people, it's, whenever there's construction, it's just a war zone around the construction site, and the damage goes to all the other properties around. If you look at Lincoln Circle, it's, the towns, you know, Lincoln Circle itself is a dust bowl. And people pulling off around the circle, it's not, it's not very, you know, it's not very well-kept. So part of, I look at some of this, is it's, if we are going to exert ownership of this as a town, then let's take care of it. You know, if we're going to say, this is what you have to do, then, you know, but then let's fix Lincoln Circle. Let's put, you know, let's put dirt, instead of putting dirt there, let's put something that isn't, doesn't look so bad, that people can park on because that's what it's turned into. The parking around there is now going down the side roads. Areas that don't have any yellow stripes because they were just, you know, suburban areas that didn't ever need it, now get cars parked on them, you know, both sides of the road to get to the beach. So there's a whole bunch of issues that are causing this above and beyond. I think, that I think we should be looking at. If we could give a, I think up there especially, if you said to everybody, yeah, you, in the fall, you can replant, but you know, but you can't have anything here now. You know, I'm doing it now because the front of my house, I put six or eight stakes, and I go, if I don't do it, Erica gets a call saying, oh, there's Matt stealing the town land again. And so I just say, Erica, you know, I'm putting the stakes in, they'll be there for, you know, a month or so. And then I take them out once the grass is there. And then over the course of the winter and the spring, I get grass again, and my neighbor gets grass, and it lasts a year or two maybe. And then it's complete, a complete mess again. And the town doesn't come over and take care of it ever. And I'm not sure the town should, but I think we should allow people to do it in a way that makes sense. And I don't have, I don't know that, what that is, but I think that it should be consistent. You know, people shouldn't have Belgium blocks, and then someone else has stone, and then someone else has got, you know, big stakes, and someone else has something. We should say, here, here's how you can do it here, and this is what, you know, and this is when you're allowed to seed, or this is when you're allowed to do this, you know. Something like that, I think, would be really helpful in this, like do it in area at a time. And I think we should be doing it. If we're going to do it, those areas, we're going to do it everywhere else. And then, and I worry that what we're doing in a way is we are upset because they're not a place to park cars. You know, kind of, we're doing this encroachment, you know, oh, it's people are walking. No, it isn't. People want to park their car there. The biggest encroachments we have are cars parked right across the sidewalks. Across half of our sidewalks downtown are impassable because cars are parked on top of them. If we're going to take care of encroachments, let's get the cars off the sidewalks. That's a huge, that's as big an issue as the corners. You know, so like, and I would rather see us put our time into that, into going back to the policy that we had, you know, 16 years ago, that seemed to have fallen away. So anyway, I mean, I support the policy, but I want to make sure that we start to figure out what is the, what's the cause of this. So anyway, I know that was a lot.
And I'll just respond to a little bit of that. I agree with you. It is a lot of staff time that we spend dealing with this issue. There's always much bigger-picture things that we need to address. I think, to your point, I'm glad you brought it up, Matt, like, we are reasonable, we're accessible. I appreciate you reaching out to me and Erica and saying, hey, just so you know, I'm trying to replant some grass, I got some stakes out. We had a similar thing on West Cough and, West Sankitty, sorry, West Sankitty out in Scanset. And, you know, the property owner said, I'm trying to replant some grass on the shoulder here. And so we let the stakes, you know, stay until that was established, and we appreciate that. As far as like the irrigation stuff, if, on, in a lot of areas, the irrigation that's in the lawn would take care of the shoulder, but there's hedges blocking it. And so now they're installing irrigation on the outside and all people driving on it. And so, you know, I agree with Bob, that that stuff really shouldn't be in the public way. And while I appreciate how nice the grass might look on the shoulder because it's irrigated, there's also issues. We had people reaching out this summer, not to single out individual property owners, but on Hummock Pond, on Vesper Lane, and some other areas, that irrigation then becomes an issue where it's constantly spraying in the road. Bikers are not appreciative of it. And so I think, you know, that stuff kind of encroaching into the right-of-way is becoming an issue. You know, but I think on a case-by-case basis, I'll just use Lincoln Circle as an example that you brought up, Matt. You know, if we need to look at that area holistically and figure out where we do and don't allow parking, and whether we should or shouldn't, it's another story. It's just that these stakes are put out by homeowners making a decision that's really based on what's best for them and not what's best for the public, so.
Yeah, I'll just say to close, you know, it's your policy. We're here to implement it to the best of our ability. I know that we talked to a lot of people that are responsive, that are receptive, and we appreciate that. And I think they appreciate the safety concerns that are raised under the policy and when we go out and talk to them, whether it's on the phone or in person. And so I think it is important to have a policy, enforce the policy we have, do our best to do that, do our best to do outreach and educate the public about the importance of this. And there are a lot of folks that are encroaching in areas of town property that may or may not really realize it. And so we certainly don't want to not have the ability to engage with them on the need for a license should the encroachment be of a significant size, that it's something that would be very disruptive to simply not address. So there's a lot of nuances. It's a very complicated issue. We appreciate you hearing us, appreciate you allowing this presentation, and we look forward to working with you on wherever you want the policy to go. But meanwhile, every day, we're working along with Drew on the policy implementation and appropriate enforcement. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm not sure that the expectation that they're manicured green lawns on a public way on the road layout is a reasonable explanation. I don't think the town, I don't think that's something the town should be doing. And I certainly think this is not private property, it's public property, and we should be treating it as such. And I don't think there's an expectation that we're going to keep it manicured like what's inside the hedge or on the property. So I support this policy, and the public way is a public way. And I think we should enforce against encroachments to the greatest extent possible, within reason, obviously. But I think having a more proactive policy where you can act quickly in the public interest, especially during the summer, rather than going back and forth with homeowners for weeks on end. And then I think more public outreach so that people understand it is not their property. It's shared, it's a shared property with the community.
Yeah, look on.
Tom, then Matt.
Okay. Thanks, Bob and Drew, for the presentation. Very interesting subject. I'm kind of going to make up kind of a flippant example, but kind of on the appeal process or the permission from us, basically. If it were, obviously, we're imminent public safety, right? That's, that's one thing. But it, would a homeowner be able to appeal? Like, they're boulders, like, I need my boulders. Would they be, like, kind of an extreme example? But I just want to understand what the criteria for, like, coming to us would be. Because we'd need to probably add a whole section to license petitions or something like that to deal with them if they got.
Yeah, there's no formal appeal process within the policy. It pretty much sets out, you know, what can be done and if it's a safety issue. I mean, certainly somebody could come to you at any time and say, hey, Drew's threatening to take away my encroachment. Let me, let me tell you why. I need a license from you. I need permission to keep it there. And again, they really should be doing this on the front end before they call the delivery persons, deliver them a half dozen boulders to be put in the public way. They should really be getting your permission. But there would be opportunities from the interface, both with our office, the Drew's office, with yours. But again, in a situation of public safety, that's where a judgment call has to be made. Is this something we really need to act on? And the only other thing I'll say to get all the lawyers in the room excited is certainly is a liability issue because these things are happening on your property. So if things happen on your property, you may be alleged to be responsible for them.
Got it, okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Matt?
I have a question. What if a homeowner plants a tree or trees in the town property? They have to ask for that, correct?
They would, they would need a license, yes.
And they have to ask for that?
Yep.
And if they don't, do we take them out?
We, we do if they're an issue, right? So we actually have, I'll give you an example. On Tom Nevers Road, there are a number of trees that were privately planted in the right-of-way. There was plenty of shoulder for people to walk, a, you know, vehicle to pull over if an emergency vehicle's coming by or if they break down. It was never really an issue. We're now building a bike path, and they are in the way, and they are on public property. So, you know, we've had other issues here in Mid-Island where trees were in the public way. They were not maintained, and we removed them. So, yeah.
I have some that we, I know some that weren't asked for that have town tags on them. And I know why they were put up, but it's, you know, long story.
Well, also, people are very selective with the trees. So I've seen things come through Click &amp; Fix. This is a town tree, it must be maintained. These limbs are falling all over my house. And I look at the photograph. The tree is behind their hedge, well into their yard. Maybe a limb goes out above the town property, but that is their tree. So again, when they want the town to pay for the maintenance, they're going to report it as an encroachment. When, you know, when they want the tree to be there, they're going to say it should be there. So again, that's the things we work with them on, as Drew was saying. We'll work with those folks.
And I do remember granting licenses when, when Ken was doing this. A lot of it was for stairs in the Old Historic District. We had kind of started doing that to legalize them and deal with liability issues and so forth, and.
And we have a process for that.
And we do grant them.
And we welcome those engagements. You will, if you find them appropriate and reasonable, you will grant them. So that's what I encourage people to talk to us about if they have those questions.
Matt, go ahead, and then I have one person online.
On Holbert, we granted someone a pull-off next to their house. You know, we did grant that probably 15, 20 years ago. And the lawyers were here, and it was a lot of, a lot of talking. But what's, if you look at some places now, people are making pull-offs that's partly on town and partly on theirs, and they're Belgian blocking it, or they have some Belgium block and some grass, or they've got whatever. And it's a way for them to stake out the parking so they get it, so someone else doesn't. So, and that's why I'm saying, I think that what, I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I think I would like some work on the holistic aspect of it because I, you know, and getting to the point, getting to the core on some of this, I think, is really important. But, and I think that Drew hit the nail on the head. We need a holistic, for certain areas, we need to look at holistically. I think it would go, even go a lot quicker. And, you know, than, than if you said, hey, guys, here's what you're allowed to do in this area, they would all do it. They want it to look good, they'll take care of it, you know? And they won't put that stuff out if they know that there's going to be yellow lines or they're going to, you know, they ain't going to have a chance to fix it once it's ruined again. But if we don't do that, and then the other point I wanted to make was the, I agree on the irrigation because part of the problem is when they irrigate outside, it becomes, it's not dry. And then when it gets driven on, you know, that's when it gets ruined. And so I agree, they shouldn't be irrigating on the back outside. But then we've got to find some, some of these places are so, they're used 15 hours a day to park on, maybe longer. You know, those, how do we handle, how do we address that as a town if they're going to be used like that? Because then they become dangerous. If you look at Lincoln Circle, it is pretty dangerous walking. If you try to walk along the middle of Lincoln Circle, I sent that picture along, it's, it's more dangerous than the other side. It's worse than what we're, our own property there is worse than the other ones that we're talking about that get addressed every year or so. So, anyway.
Campbell Sutton, online. I'll take a quick comment or question.
Hi, good evening. Thanks so much for recognizing me, I really appreciate it. So I have a question about the hedges. Like, a lot of new, newly-developed properties along road sides, maybe even older developed properties. But anyway, it seems that the stem, like the origination of the hedge, is planted upon the lot line, which automatically means that the growth side is going to be an encroachment upon the sidewalk, the roadway, the, you know, whatever happens to be next to them, thinking specifically in town. And up on, well, up where Matt lives, in that area there, we have some new developments going in, and the people are put, well, developments mean new lots, not huge developments. But anyway. And, and it seems to me that the hedges, brand-new, are four to five feet tall. The, the base is along the lot line, and it sounds like, it seems to me that they've automatically created an encroachment. And I'm just wondering, like, where in this process can something like that be looked at? I don't know if it's at the HDC level or the Building Department, or they have to create a planting plan and show what they're going to do. But it would seem like the base of the plant should be inside the property lot line, and the growth edge should be, you know, with a calculated growth edge that would go no further than the lot line. So I'm just curious about that because, like, honestly, you can't see in half these streets downtown. But anyway, thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you. I mean, I would think the easy answer is if it starts to encroach and it's a problem, they'd have to move them back.
Yeah, and we have a lot of those instances, right? I've had discussions this year with folks who will say, you know, you're right, this tree, we love this bush, and we've had it for a long time, but it's clearly now literally into the street in some instances. And they'll say, it's time, it's time it has to go. And they'll start over and hopefully put it far enough back where it's not going to start encroaching right out of the box.
Yeah, Camp, Campbell is right on this, though it is a relatively recent occurrence where we're squeezing so much onto some of these properties that they are. She's completely right. It should be, it should be, it should be planted initially in the right place, you know? And it's sort of, it would be, it would be proactive to get that early in the process and not have to come back to them, you know, five years later and say, hey, you shouldn't have done this before, you know?
Any other questions, comments?
No, do they, do we want to do a formal endorsement of the existing policy? I would make that motion.
I think so. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, by roll call. Malcolm McNabb?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Brooke Moore?
Aye.
Tom Dixon?
Aye.
Don Hill, aye. That carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So next, we've got an update for you on public restroom renovation procurement, which relates to the Harbor Master Building. The finance director is going to take you through. We do have some recommended options. I think they're pretty reasonable and make, make sense, and we've had a lot of internal discussion about this.
Thank you, Libby. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. So as the town manager mentioned, we're going to take you through the start of this process, the procurement, what are, we see our options as, and a recommended outcome or option to, for you to consider. Next slide, please. So on this little milestone chart, in So on this little milestone chart, in January of 2024, we undertook with SMRT a feasibility study of the Visitor Services, Sconset Village, Jetties Beach, Surfside Beach, Children's Beach, Harbor Master Building, Deonis, Tom Nevers Fields, and Materials Resource Facility at 188 Maticat Road. We undertook the feasibility study to understand the condition of the bathrooms, what needed to be done to the bathroom, and then had discussions internally. Once that was completed by SMRT, and in June of 2024, we put out a request for qualifications, which was a qualifications-based solicitation for a design firm under Chapter 7 to be able to proceed to design. In October of 2024, we, after receiving responses and evaluating the responses, we made the recommendation and awarded the contract for design of the bathroom, municipal bathroom renovations to SMRT. They conducted the design for specifically four locations. That was for Visitor Services, Sconset Village, the Harbor Master Building, and on the September 12th one, the Murph Building was left off there, but that was included in the original design work. We did put that out to bid, received those bids for those four locations in September. And subsequent to the receipt of those, Select Board made a determination to request that we continue to proceed with the potential for the new Harbor Master Building, which is in the process of updated design and ultimately a procurement to get a cost basis for that project to potentially take it to the annual town meeting, which may require some additional funding, but it does present some challenges to us based on the timing of the procurement that we had put out. Next slide. Thank you, Erica. So as I mentioned, we put this bid out in July of 2025. It's a construction project, so it was done under the rules of following Chapter 149. There were filed sub bids for particular trades being electrical, plumbing, HVAC. We received those filed sub bid responses on August 11th and issued an addenda to all the general contractors that had pulled the bid, received the general bids on September 12th. We received three bids from Pearl Company for 3.3 million, JJ Cardosi for 3.6 million, and Marin Construction for 4.2 million. So because of the directive to consider or continue potentially with the Harbor Master Building project, that building was included in the solicitation that we did. They were not, it was a lump sum bid for all four of them, so we have very limited options in how to proceed, which I'm going to take the board through on the next slide. So option one, we could award the bid potentially to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder from the three that we received. However, and we would have the renovations completed in time for the summer season for the two priority locations being Visitor Services and the Sconset Restroom Facility. However, because of the inclusion for the Harbor Master and the other path that we are simultaneously taking with, at the board's direction, it would mean we protect, possibly be spending an additional $850,000 on a building that very well could be demolished in two years, which, in discussion with Drew, we're not sure that that would be the best uses, best use of the funds for building maintenance and renovations. Option two would be to reject the bids, revise the drawings, eliminate the Harbor Master Building, and then rebid the project. Eliminating the Harbor Master Building would obviously save approximately $850,000 if we were to select this option. However, Drew and I, looking at the timeline, do not believe that we would be able to get the Visitor Services or Sconset, Sconset Bathroom renovations done in time to open for the summer season, and it would likely require trailer, portable bathrooms, facilities at those locations for the summer season. Option three would be to reject the bids, rebid with the Harbor Master Building as an alternate or eliminated, depending on the outcome of annual town meeting. We would put this bid out in May of 2026. One of the big pros about this would be that it would allow the town to understand if the Harbor Master Building went forward or if it didn't. The flip side of that is that we would delay the renovations of the high priority locations being Visitor Services and Sconset Comfort Station and the Murph Bathrooms for an additional season. Next slide. So Drew and I internally discussed this, and then we did have discussions with both the town manager and the deputy town managers. And our recommendation, really, we feel the best option would be to reject all the bids and rebid after the annual town meeting, which, while it will delay it, will give us clarity on what the town decides to do with the Harbor Master Building. And we think that this is the best course of action to undertake for this. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And if there's any questions about the facilities themselves, Drew is here to, to provide input for that.
Questions? Comments?
Yeah, I have questions. What work needs to be done in each of these? Is this, you know, new toilets and tile, or is this complete rebuilds? Like, what is the, what are we bidding here?
Yeah, it's a pretty substantial overhaul of these facilities. For example, there is a lot of electrical plumbing and HVAC work in all of them. The Visitor Services restroom would gain an additional fixture in the women's room. The big thing for the Sconset Comfort Station would be making it a year-round facility, which I know I've heard time and time again from the folks in Sconset that, that they, you know, really, really desire. And then, yeah, it's, it's certainly a little frustrating. This is kind of the challenge of having these, these seasons that we have to, to meet. And unfortunately, sometimes how we receive the bids and if there's issues with them and we're facing bid protests potentially, there's sometimes stuff that's out of our control. And, and I think at the end of the day, you know, we really don't feel comfortable kind of racing into making the wrong decision. Or, you know, I, I kind of broke the news that we may not be moving forward this season to Scott Civic Association this morning. And, you know, I can't stop thinking about the fact that we might, if we were to award and start construction, or, well, revise the bids, revise the documents, rebid and start construction later than we intended to. I can't imagine having portable toilets in Pump House Square or downtown outside of Visitor Services in June, July, maybe some of August. You know, I think that's something that we're, we're just not going to be comfortable with. So.
No, I'm in favor of canceling it. The question, so for someone to bid, what is the qualifications necessary for a bidder? You know, it, like, yeah, what do they have to do to be qualified to be able to bid?
So because of the estimate of the threshold of the, that we have here with roughly 3 million, they would need to be DCAM certified either in, so the filed sub bids would need to be DCAM certified in a particular trade that they were submitting for, and/or the general contractor would have to be DCAM certified for, at a minimum, the amount that was in the bid that they're proposing to do.
And what is DCAM? What does that mean?
It's the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, and it's a particular certification for general contractors and filed sub bids. And as with every building project that we have, Matt, on the island, there are very few general contractors or trades, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, that actually take, go through the process of getting DCAM certified. So the majority of these are, at this point, unfortunately, they're off-island contractors. That's, that's what we get with most of these high-priced construction projects.
Right. Okay. Yeah, because I'm thinking, I've, I've got a guy who can do all of this, he would do it unbelievable. He'd do it for a million bucks, not three. And, and he'd still be, he'd make two or three times more than he's ever made in his life. And I can't imagine that, I just, I see these things, like, I see the $2 million bathroom with nothing in it, or $2 million shed, and I just feel like, how do we get these guys certified? Or how do we, what if it was donated? Could somebody donate this to the town? Could someone say, you know what, we've got a pile of money and we're gonna, we'd like to fix this for, like, could the Sconset trust, or could somebody else do this?
They'd still have to.
We'd still have to meet all the requirements, even if they're making a donation. That, it's very restrictive. And I will tell you, when, when Diane O'Neil was here and at the school, there was an effort over more than once to try to convince or get any of the island contractors interested in getting the certification. And there's just not a big interest in doing it because it does come with a lot of additional paperwork and requirements that, respectfully with all the, with the work that they have, it just, it's not worth their time and effort. So, unfortunately.
Yeah, whoever's doing this is making, they're making Alkeen level cashier for a winter. It's unbelievable. Anyway.
Encourage more people to get certified.
Brian, and also prevailing wages.
And prevailing wages.
Over a certain, if, remembering back to your previous presentations, over a certain amount, you need an OPM as well, right?
We, we would, but because Drew has experience with building and construction, he would have been able to serve as the, he was going to be the OPM for this, which does help, but we still need the, we still need construction services from SMRT once this was awarded as well.
Here's a question. Could we have someone on staff that gets a certification?
For building?
Yeah. Could we get someone on the town staff to have that certification?
So the interesting thing about the DCAM is that you have to be participated or completed projects up to or past the limit of the work that you're submitting for. So it isn't as easy as just getting certified. It's you have to do work within that category to, and then, and build up to the, the limit and, and what you're, what we would be looking for. So I think it might be difficult, is the best way to answer that.
Can I add a tiny bit to that? If we had enough staff who was, who were actual plumbers, electricians, carpenters, and a contractor-like facilities manager, sure. But we don't have, we can't even get an electrician to come to respond in a, in a manner in which we need them. So those, those skills are not available to us to, to be on staff. So we are in a, in a bind with many town projects like this. And I'm not actually sure that the contractor doing, if, if this goes through with the bathroom job, is making millions and millions, because they also have other costs that island contractors don't have. They have to get people here, they have to bring equipment here, they have to house them potentially or pay for them to get here every day. They lose time when the boat doesn't run. There's a lot, there's, there's, there's a lot to this. It's, it's complicated doing municipal jobs anywhere, but particularly here. If we could hire, we have talked about this with the school on a number of occasions. Could we hire somebody and get them certified as an electrician? Maybe, but they aren't going to make anywhere near with the town what they're going to
This is something that, at some point, we need some, because this is, this is, we've talked about this for years, I know that. But at some point, we need, there's got to be, we need some help. We've got to find some way to deal with it. Because the voters are just going to start rejecting all this stuff.
The, the only way, I think, to deal with it is to get some sort of home rule petition that exempts Nantucket specifically from certain municipal procurement requirements. And I think we, as a matter of fact, the inspector general, was that the guy that came to visit us this summer?
Yes, it was, yes.
We spoke with him about this. He understood. Were you there?
Yeah.
Yeah. He was, he was very nice, he was very friendly, he wants to help towns. And when we brought this up, he was sort of like, oh, yeah, well, probably not.
Yeah. He was not too enthusiastic that we'd be successful, so.
No, he didn't, he didn't call us up right away and say, it's all taken care of, to say the least. Rocking a hard place, unfortunately, Matt. I, I feel your frustration on it. It's, I, I would move to endorse option three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, just on, on the motion, I'm supportive of that. I wish that we had done the Harbor Master bathroom separate so we could have gotten these done, but we didn't, so.
Yeah. Here we are.
I think this is the right path.
All those in favor, by roll call. Malcolm McNabb?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Brookmore?
Aye.
Tom Dixon?
Aye.
Don Hill, aye. That carries unanimously.
Madam Chair, not, not to beat a dead horse, but I think we didn't go with option three because we thought we were going to be building a new building. And we didn't want to spend a bunch of money on something we were going to tear down in a year.
Yeah, no, totally agree. I just wish it wasn't in a package. That was the only.
So we, all we have under Select Board reports and comments is committee reports. Does anybody have anything for tonight? Okay, well then.
Well, we will be talking about town meeting stuff next week. It's on the agenda. So if there's any comments that the board is thinking of making or things they want to say after we hear what happens, you know, in the next couple of days with the planning board and the finance committee, please bring that ready to go.
And I will not be participating in that as a board member. Okay, is there, you know, someone's favorite motion of the night?
Motion adjourned.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, by roll call. Malcolm McNabb?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Brookmore?